I'd like to call the Village Board meeting to order if you'd stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, universal, eternal, just as it is now.
Okay, welcome everyone, and welcome to everyone watching at home. Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Trustee Hearn.
President.
Trustee Gett.
President.
Trustee Dan Mariscal.
President.
Trustee Diane Mariscal.
President.
Trustee Reichert.
President.
And Trustee Carter.
President.
Okay, nice to see everyone, everyone here in attendance. We would be at Item 4, Approval of Board of Trustees Minutes for Tuesday, January 16th, 2018. And let's do both of these at the same time, and also approval of the minutes from the special meeting Thursday, January 11th, 2018. So I would ask for a motion to approve those sets of minutes.
So moved.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I do. Any questions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving both of those sets of minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Madam Clerk, any correspondence?
No correspondence.
Okay. Now we're at announcements. If you didn't notice when you came in, outside in front of Village Hall and Prospect is one of our prototypes for the street seating, so take a look at that. We're excited about that, and we're rolling out a whole series of events coming this spring. The grand opening of the dog park, rolling out the street seating, Tower Park grand opening, as well as the sculpture walk. So it's all part of a whole series of events that we're very excited about. But if you haven't seen it, please take the time over the next couple of days. Mr. Smith, that will be out outside for how many days?
I intend to leave it out long enough so that we can try and get the business owners, the restaurant owners group up here to see it as well, to gauge their interest in it.
Okay.
So we'll leave it out for at least the rest of this week, maybe some of next week as well.
Okay. Thanks, and thanks for all your work on that. Okay, next we would be at a presentation by Charles Schneider. Charlie? I don't see him. Okay. All right. We're going to move on to trustees' reports. The first is Economic and Community Development. Trustee Dan Mariscal.
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing to report this evening.
Okay. Next would be Trustee Carter.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
Nothing? Okay. Building and Property Maintenance. Trustee Gett.
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing to report this time.
Okay, then fire. Trustee Reichert.
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing this evening.
Okay. Public Works. Trustee Hearn.
Thank you, Mayor Phelan. I have two quick things. The first thing, the light down on the corner of Lake and Prospect is flashing. It's been flashing today. There's a part broken in it, and the city of Peoria is ordering a part to repair that, and so by tomorrow that should be repaired.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Trustee Hearn?
Yeah, the second thing I have, we have a little bit of good news. Our latest Public Works hire, Zach Wilson, passed his water operator's license, and that brings the total to five of the people who possess the water operator's license. And the significance of this is they can fill out the paperwork, the EPA paperwork that has to go along with the testing that's done at our water department. At one time a few years ago, we, our superintendent retired, and we lost our other guy that had the license, and we ended up having to hire an outside company to come in for a while and fill out all of our EPA reports. So we were sort of scrambling a little bit because, you know, you can't shut down. So this, now we're up to five, so it's a good thing.
Thanks for making us aware of that. It gives me a great deal of comfort that our water is safe and that we have more than one person that has a water license. And our, congratulations to Zach. I'm told that's not an easy test to pass, so thank you. Anything else, gentlemen?
No, sir.
While it's raining very hard outside, can you give us an update on any type of river flooding and preparedness for that? Are we monitoring that?
Yes, we have weatherman Michael Casey on the scene, keeping a very close eye on the weather situation as he typically does, and he is almost on an hourly basis keeping me apprised of this fast-moving situation. Right now, we're hopeful that we won't experience too much flooding. The predictions have varied wildly, so it all just kind of depends on what happens to the north of us. So if it does get to that point, our standard response usually is to take folks down their sandbags. It seems like lately they deal with this on almost an annual basis, so they're well used to getting prepared for floodwaters.
Okay. All right, thank you, gentlemen. All right, we would be at Administration and Personnel. Diane Mariscal, Trustee Mariscal, go right ahead, please.
I have nothing to report at this time, ma'am.
Okay. We'll get right into comments from the audience. Any comments from the audience? Comments from the audience going once, twice, closed. Okay. Onto Old Business. Is there any old business come before the board? Hearing none, we would be at New Business. Onto the Resolutions. The first is Ordinance 2018-1544, an ordinance approving the redevelopment plan and projects for the Peoria Heights Tax Increment Financing District III. Trustee Mariscal, I would ask for a motion to approve this.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Ordinance 2018-1544.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, back to you, Dan.
Yeah, I'll set this up real quick. What this ordinance will do is it'll provide a formal approval of the redevelopment plan and projects regarding TIF District III. It also delineates the legal process, followed by the village, regarding the creation of TIF District III as mandated by Illinois state law.
Okay. Mr. Fick, anything else?
No, I would just point out that Nick Nelson, who drafted the ordinance, and all three ordinances we're about to vote on is here in attendance if there's any specific questions that you might want to direct to him, but I don't have anything to add.
Okay, welcome, Mr. Nelson. Is there anything you would like to add to the conversation? If so, please come forward. If, no, okay.
I think we should have those in the pack, don't we?
We do already. Okay. Anyone in the audience who wants a copy, you're welcome to get it. Okay, open for discussion. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, then Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Hearn.
Aye.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Dan Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Reichert.
Aye.
And Trustee Carter.
Aye.
Okay, that passes. Thank you. Next, Ordinance 2018-1545, an ordinance designating the redevelopment project area for Peoria Heights Tax Increment Financing District III. Trustee Mariscal, I'd ask for a motion to approve this.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Ordinance 2018-1545.
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
I do. All right, go ahead, Trustee Mariscal.
Yes. In essence, what this ordinance will do is legally set definitive redevelopment project area boundaries for TIF District III. It'll give us basically a finalized approved map.
Thanks for that good explanation. Anything else, Mr. Fick? No? Discussion? Okay, if you're ready for the question, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Hearn.
Aye.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Dan Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Reichert.
Aye.
Trustee Carter.
Thank you. That passes. All right, Ordinance 2018-1546, an ordinance adopting tax increment allocation financing for Peoria Heights Tax Increment Financing District III. Trustee Mariscal.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve Ordinance 2018-1546.
All right, I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
I do. Okay, go ahead, Dan.
Yes, this ordinance, in essence, delineates the process to be followed regarding the allocation of tax increment generated from projects in the redevelopment area. The second prong of it is that it'll also create a special tax allocation fund from which redevelopment project costs and obligations will be paid.
And again, thank you for that good explanation. Mr. Fick, anything else?
No, sir.
Okay, discussion on this. Okay, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Gett. Oops, sorry. Trustee, Trustee Hearn.
Aye.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Dan Mariscal.
Aye.
Diane Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Reichert.
Aye.
And Trustee Carter.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next, Ordinance 2018-1547, an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a redevelopment agreement by and between the Village of Peoria Heights and PH Samuel LLC. Trustee Mariscal.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve Ordinance 2018-1547.
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
I do. All right, thank you, gentlemen. Go ahead, Dan.
Yes, this ordinance, in essence, is a formal approval of the redevelopment agreement regarding the proposed Samuel Avenue project. It also sets the scope of Phase 1 of the developer's proposed project, and then finally, it'll allow for the developer to move forward with the project in earnest, and it also provides commitments to be filled by both the developer and the village.
Thank you very much, Mr. Fick.
No, I think you covered it quite well. Thanks.
Welcome, Ms. Kim. Anything you'd like to add?
Um, not since...
Please come forward. Good to see you, though.
Good to see you, thanks. Not since our last update, the last meeting, we were told about how we acquired 1408, and the couple that was residing in 1408 actually moved on the other side of Prospect, stayed within the Village of Peoria Heights, and actually was able to get a larger house that is actually housing now her family, which is, he had a daughter that moved back home. So that was a good win, as we shared last time, that we were able to acquire their home and then keep them in the village, so.
That's a win-win. Thanks for that good news.
Thank you.
While we have you here, just for everyone watching at home and in the audience, can you give us a quick synopsis of Phase 1 of your project?
Yes, so Phase 1 is basically to purchase the homes along Samuel of those that are willing and able to sell. And then basically, we are looking at, as it's outlined in the document here for Phase 1, to, over time, we're keeping them rented. We're actually taking renters now for a couple new homes. We just put a new renter into one of them this past week, and then we'll release the townhome lots in phases, so we're looking forward to that.
Great. Trustees, questions for Mr. Mariscal or Mr. Fick or Ms. Kim? Any discussion on the motion?
I have a question for Ms. Kim. So how long, do they have rental agreements on these homes, the people that you've put in there? I mean, like, do they have, like, a one-year lease, and then you'll go from there and see?
Well, actually, most of the leases that we're taking over are month-to-month, and they've started out that way, which is really not a good lease, to be honest. When you look at those, it's usually more transient renters in there, but the majority of the houses that we are purchasing that already have renters are on a month-to-month lease. We are moving them into at least a six-month or a year, depending on where they're located at on that street.
Okay.
Anyone else? Katie, thanks for bringing us another project we know we're going to be very proud of, and we've enjoyed working with you, and looking forward to getting this kick-started. So anyone else? Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Trustee Hearn.
Aye.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Dan Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Reichert.
Aye.
Trustee Carter.
Okay, that passes. Okay, next is the appointment of and the approval of an employment contract with Police Chief Dustin Sutton. Let me set this up by saying that the mayor has three appointments: Police Chief, Public Works Director and Village Administrator. And tonight, don't read any more into this than is there, but I'm very proud to not only be able to bring you this appointment, but to know and to work with Chief Sutton. I'm very proud of him and all that he's done for Peoria Heights and also his career in law enforcement, so with great pride I bring this to you tonight for his reappointment. And I do expect next board meeting, I don't want to vote on these issues at a departmental meeting, but at the next board meeting, there will be an agreement with Mr. Fick and Mr. Smith that will be brought to you for your recommendation and appointment as well. So, Trustee Carter, I'd ask for a motion to approve this.
I make a motion.
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. I do want you to know, council is here, if anyone wanted to go into an executive session, we can defer action on this until the end of the meeting and go into executive session and come back if you're ready to discuss it now. That's what I would recommend, and Mr. Tibbs can, actually, Mr. Tibbs, could I ask you to walk through the contract and the changes, please, sir? And please, what this does, this appointment and also the contract.
This agreement is very similar to the agreement that Chief Sutton currently operates under. Most of the changes are not substantial. They're more stylistic than substance. The substantive changes involve, obviously, the salary. The proposed agreement provides for a 3% annual increase for the term of the contract each year. It sets forth the exact amount in paragraph 4. The paragraph 5 involves performance evaluation. There's always, in the current contract, there is a paragraph 5, performance evaluation. I've added additional language, making it, establishing a specific date by which the evaluation is to be completed, and I've also provided in the agreement that it's the responsibility of the chief to make the village board aware of the date and to take action to bring about the evaluation, so that it's, you know, these kinds of things oftentimes slip through the cracks, if you will, if you don't have something specific indicating when the evaluation With respect to the vacations, the contract adds, although I think there's never been a problem with this, it adds specific language to provide that the president is to be notified as to how the chief can be contacted in the event that there's an emergency that it becomes necessary for the chief to weigh in on while on vacation. There is an increase in the annual uniform allowance from $750 to $850, and then there's some language on the procedure for the termination by the village in the event that the village wishes to terminate prior to the expiration. That allows for the president to file with the board reasons for the removal. The chief is provided with a written copy of the reasons, and the removal doesn't become effective unless it's approved by a majority vote of the village board. That's essentially the way the current agreement works, and it's consistent with state law in that regard. Maintains the current level severance pay at two months in the event of a termination, and it also continues to provide for two months of health insurance coverage. The final change is, again, really a clarification in paragraph 22, that there is, it is clear under law, under the law, that an appointed official cannot survive his service, can't survive the term of the mayor who does the appointment. Now, that doesn't mean if the mayor decides not to run and somebody else is elected, that the chief's automatically out, but it means that that mayor can appoint, whoever the new mayor is can exercise the power of appointment. It could be either Chief Sutton or it could be somebody else. But in order to make it clear that the, consistent with state law, the term doesn't go beyond the term of the mayor who appoints, it does provide for a termination date of April 30 of 2021, I believe is that's the date. Yes. So those are the changes. If anybody has any questions or concerns.
So any discussion or questions of Mr. Tibbs? And I do want to take this time, again, I'm very proud to make this recommendation to you, and I'm comfortable with contracts. I think it identifies expectations by both parties, but again, for the record, not only this appointment, but the other appointments, those expectations are identified, and these employees are all at-will employees, correct, sir?
That is correct.
Serving the pleasure of the mayor and the board.
That is correct. The mayor, under each contract, the mayor, if the mayor decided that, for whatever reason, that the person should no longer occupy the office, the mayor can essentially provide reasons why, and if the village board concurs with those reasons, the employment is terminated. If the village board disagrees with the mayor, the employment continues.
Thank you very much. Okay, discussion?
In paragraph 6, it looks like we moved from four weeks to five weeks. That's not marked in red. Is that due to the number of years that he has?
Mike, did you hear the question?
Um, no, I didn't.
Could you repeat that, Trustee Reichert?
In paragraph 6, vacation pay, it looks like we've moved, it's not, it's not in red, but it looks like we've moved from four weeks to five weeks.
Mm-hmm.
Is that due to the number of years that he has?
I can answer that, Mayor. Yes, that is correct.
I was wondering if...
What was that, Chief? Go ahead, sir.
I said, yeah, that is correct. And the only comment I was going to make is, first of all, thank the mayor and the board for their continued support, no matter what the outcome is, but everything in this contract, other than the salary, is the same that a non-probationary police officer would receive in Peoria Heights. As far as the vacation, that is along the vacation structure set by the union contract. So everything in here, other than salary, is the exact same amount. The increase in uniform allowance per union contract last negotiation was raised, so I raised mine, that nothing in here is off, a non-probationary officer would get, other than the salary. So that might clarify a lot of that, and that is vacation structure as well, so.
How many years you have?
I'll start with 24.
Any other questions, Trustee Reichert?
No, sir.
Anyone else? Okay, and again, before I call the question on this, if anybody wanted to make a motion to defer this and to go into executive session later, we can do that, but not hearing that, I'm going to ask Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Okay, Trustee Hearn.
Aye.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Dan Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Reichert.
Aye.
And Trustee Carter.
Aye.
That passes, and congratulations, Chief. I'm looking forward to continuing working with you. Okay, next, a request to purchase a speed trailer in the amount of $7,368 for the Peoria Heights Police Department. Trustee Carter, I'd ask for a motion to approve that.
I make a motion.
Yeah, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I do. All right, go ahead.
Okay, this is to purchase another speed trailer, just so, because the one that we have is, everybody wants it in front of their spot, their neighborhood, so we're going to order another one as long as it gets approved. Now, I know when we, last time we talked, we talked about it being $4,400, but with the, excuse me, the other items that need to be added on to this trailer to make it match the other one, that's why it's $7,368. Now, I know there's another one that we could have purchased for, what'd you say, $12,000, which we don't want to do that, so I make a motion to, for the $7,368 to purchase the, I already did a motion.
Yeah, you did that. Thank you.
Okay.
So, Chief, anything else, then?
No, I think that when we first discussed it, the things we were looking at, but as far as the speed counter, the number of vehicles that pass by the trailer at a certain amount of time, something we really want to know, that's why we added that, but it is consistent with the other one we have. It's been very successful in the residential areas we've placed it in. I mean, the residents really love it, and it has, it's been a deterrent, so I think it's a very good use of our money that it's budgeted for.
Okay, so questions for Trustee Carter or Chief Sutton? Discussion on the motion? All right, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Hearn.
Aye.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Dan Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Reichert.
Aye.
And Trustee Carter.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Last is a request for approval of rail replacement for Tower Park Elevator in the amount of $24,520. Trustee Gett, I'd ask for a motion to approve that.
I'd like to make a motion to approve $24,520 for rail replacement on the elevator of the tower.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it, but I have a question afterwards.
Okay, let Trustee Gett go ahead and talk about this, and we'll get to you, Trustee Hearn, after that.
Okay, originally, we had, it was an inspection by the state, if I'm correct, and they said one rail was bad, and it was only going to be all labor and stuff, $5,000. Well, when Cone came in and looked at it again, they said the other three were in bad shape. We got back with the state inspector, asked him what he thought, and he deferred to Cone, and, because Cone said, well, we could go ahead and fix the one and take a chance that the others would be okay, but after talking, Administrator Fick and I talked, that it would postpone the opening of the tower to midsummer, and the least-case scenario is we get it postponed. Worst case is, we don't get it fixed, we don't fix all four rails, because it supports it, and someone gets hurt. So I figure, instead of putting it off, I mean, we will figure out a way, I mean, it wasn't budgeted, but I think it's best to take care of it now and not take chances. And, I mean, we need that open for our opening date, and it's not worth the risk. $24,520 is cheap in comparison, so.
Thank you, Trustee Gett. Are there any questions for Trustee Gett?
So when are they supposed to have this done?
Well, as soon as it's approved, if it's approved tonight, then...
How long is it scheduled to be?
Their schedule will come out next week, so...
So does it take a week? Does it take two weeks?
The scope of their, yeah, that I don't, that I don't know. It should be done well before the April opening. It's a little more tricky to do the four rails, because they have to take the car off, the car offline, that's why it's a little more expensive, but it should be done well in advance of the official opening.
Because then it still has to be inspected again, right?
Right, then the state has to come out and inspect it, and then we have to apply for the operator's license or certificate to hang in the cart, so, yeah, things need to happen fairly quickly to meet the deadline.
And we know how fast the state works.
Have the rails ever been changed on the...
Not since I've been here, so I don't know prior to that if they were, but I, well, they kind of rebuilt it, what, you probably know.
Well, they were spending a ton of money on it about 15 years ago, and then even more recently, we put money into it, a lot of money into it.
We did, we had to redo the cable one year, that was about $20,000 as well, so it's not an inexpensive venture.
Times of the car being stuck and visitors stuck in the, in the car, I mean...
Didn't we have a maintenance agreement with somebody on the other end?
We do with Cone, but it doesn't, I mean, that includes the inspection, the normal wear and tear type of maintenance, but not, you know, not something like the...
Doesn't cover the rails?
No, not the replacement of them.
What is the purpose of the rails?
I think it's the car uses the four rails, you know, to move up and down.
It supports it, it keeps it, if something happened...
On the inside, yeah.
It also will slow it down.
Does it have brakes on the rails? Is that how, in an emergency, it would stop the car?
Right.
Like the cable would break?
That would, so, yeah.
The rails go bad, it can fall, the way I understand it.
I thought it was, like, on cables.
It's all...
It's on cables as well.
It's all a system.
Yeah, some cables, and the cables would have brakes, but the drums would have brakes, but I'm sure there's, like, a secondary, there's a backup, you know? You never hear people splattering in those things.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Brian.
Enjoy the tower, ladies and gentlemen.
Okay, anything else?
Trustee Reichert, anything, any follow-up?
Nothing.
Okay. All right, if you're ready for the question, Madam Clerk, call the roll on that.
Trustee Hearn.
Aye.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Dan Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Reichert.
Aye.
And Trustee Carter.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. We would be at the Treasurers' Report.
Okay, gotta find it, all right. All right, I show in the Village of Peoria Heights Fund that grand total for the fund is $1,362,8915.
I show in the Village of Peoria Heights Fund that grand total for the fund is $1,360,289.15. And for the water fund, it is $498,566.94.
All right. You've heard the treasures report. I would ask for a motion to approve it.
So moved.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Hearn.
Aye.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Dan Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Reichert.
Aye.
Trustee Carter.
Aye.
All right. Thank you. All that passes. Before we adjourn, I just want to let you all know, I know Matt updated you, we had a meeting last Friday with Senator Kayler on Route 29, and not only the public safety issues associated with the speed of the traffic on Route 29, but also looking on down the road for potential residential and commercial development in that corridor. We were very well received by Senator Kayler. He's a great senator and a great friend of Peoria Heights, and we're gonna continue that conversation. For more information on that, please feel free to reach out to Matt and I. And then also, Mr. Blasick, I see you in the audience.